... Houston and KNWO, ninety point one Cotmood-Greenvale.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, April fourth, and this is a regular Moscow City Council meeting. John?
Would you please stand and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, with the stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with every justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. First thing on the agenda is Earth Day proclamation I am so happy to read. Whereas the first Earth Day was celebrated on April twenty-second, nineteen seventy, and whereas Earth Day originated in the United States and became recognized worldwide by nineteen ninety, and whereas every year on April twenty-second, men, women, children collect garbage, plant trees, celebrate sustainable accomplishments, and more, and whereas the observation of Earth Day will highlight and focus our attention on our planet, our country, and our community, and whereas Earth Day is a day celebrated around the globe to remind all of us of the responsibility of each person to preserve and improve the earth and equality of life in his or her local community. Now therefore, I, Bill Lambert, the mayor of the city of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April twenty-second, twenty sixteen, to be observed and celebrated as Earth Day. And the city of Moscow, a special day to remember our earth, a day for reminding us of how we can all help to preserve the wonderful environment that we enjoy as citizens in Moscow. And with that, Gary, we want to, we have a little bit more on Earth Day awards.
Yes, sir. We are seeking nominations, so I'll read the press release that was issued a few days ago. The city of Moscow is seeking nominations for the mayor's two thousand sixteen Earth Day awards. The awards recognize Moscow residents of all ages and backgrounds for activities conducive to environmental sustainability. The concept first set forth in two thousand and six is to acknowledge and encourage sustainable practices that foster environmental sustainability through conservation, recycling, reuse, construction slash design, and public education. Earth Day has been celebrated on April twenty-second each year since its inception in nineteen seventy. Nominations for the award will be accepted through April fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Nominations should include the names of the nominator and the nominee, contact information for both, and a brief description of why the nominee is worthy of the recognition. Those may be submitted by letter to the city of Moscow Sustainability Intern, P.O. Box nine-two-oh-three, Moscow, Idaho, eight-three-eight-four-three, or electronically to Adam Lane, our AmeriCorps Sustainability and High Five Coordinator, at A-L-A-N-E at C-I dot Moscow dot I-D dot U-S. Nominations will be considered by Mayor Bill Lambert and awarded at the city council meeting on April eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven P.M. in city hall council chambers. Again, for more information, contact Adam Lane at two-zero-eight-eight-eight-three-seven-one-two-two, or by email at A-L-A-N-E at C-I dot Moscow dot I-D dot U-S, and you can certainly call the general Moscow number at eight-eight-three-seven-thousand, or go to the city's website for more information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. With that, we will move on to item number one, which is the consent agenda.
I would move we...
... has presented. Echoing?
I'll second.
Okay. Art made a motion, seconded by John, to approve the consent agenda as is. I'll take the start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. We will move on to the next thing. Thank you. Okay, item number two, staff recognition report. Gary, do we have any reports, sir?
We have none tonight, sir.
Okay, then the next thing is mayoral appointments. And I've got two appointments in front of the council this evening. Annette Bigler-Lamadrid for Board of Adjustment Commission with expiration at twelve-thirty-one of twenty-twenty, and Isabel Strawn, Sustainable Environment Commission, which would expire twelve-thirty-one of twenty-sixteen, and that is a high school non-voting seat. I would entertain a motion from somebody to approve?
Your honor, I'd move to accept the plate of nominees, the slate of nominees.
I'll second that. Okay. The motion was moved by Dan, seconded by Jim, to approve both of our nominees for commissions. I'll start the roll with you, John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Very good. I know we have one of them here. Annette, is Isabel here as well? Would you please stand up? This is Annette, everybody, and thank you so very much. We did. And Annette, you can say a few words, but you don't have to if you do not wish to, but we really appreciate all the volunteerism that we have for citizens on our various commissions. It's a, it's a big deal for me as the mayor, as well as for the council, because what makes our community great is the diversity of people that we have on our commissions so that we get a idea, and not only ideas, but good news from folks, no matter who they are, so we welcome you to that commission. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
You need to approach the microphone, I'm sorry.
Annette, come on up here. Well, Annette, here's the deal, you're on TV now, dear, so you, yes, you are, so I should have waited to tell you that afterwards.
Well, thank you for having me here. I'm looking forward to whatever I can contribute, and I hope, I'm sure I'm going to learn a lot from all of you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
See what the future holds.
Thank you very much, Annette. Okay, now is item number four. This is public comment where we reserve fifteen minutes for folks to get up and talk about various things, as long as it is something that is not on tonight's agenda, or something that is before the Board of Adjustments, or planning and zoning. If you come up and address this, please hold your comments to within three minutes, if you would please, or last, state your name and address. With that, I would open it up.
Good evening. My name is Bill Gosling. I live at eleven forty-one Paradise Ridge Road, Moscow.
Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. I'm here for two purposes. The first is to do, share with you my candidacy for Idaho House Representatives, District five A, and second is to gather your, or so is gather your support for an effort that I've been doing as a veteran and as a member of the state school board, and also just a general interest as a candidate, and that is the support that our veterans have or have not gotten. We're a hundred and seventy-eight thousand of them in the state of Idaho, and there's one special group that has really taken my attention, that's the thirty thousand plus that have been post-nine-eleven vets that have come back, they needs help, and part of that is the governor brought together a large number of stakeholders, and I'm one of them, and to form a veterans, oops, that comes out of my time, right? Forms a veterans, soldiers, and families coordinating council. This is bringing all the efforts throughout the state into one group to see what we can do to help veterans. These young men and women have come back from nine-eleven, gave up their careers, gave up their lives to service, and a lot of them have got some significant problems, so that one of the things that we're doing is we're bringing together these resources to help. Spent some time down in the Department of Veteran Services, Boise, and they told me all about all these great partnerships they have down in Treasure Valley, and I said, well, what have we got up north? And the answer was, well, well, well. And so what I'm hoping for your support tonight is, I've convinced them to hold the next council meeting here in June, and I would like to get your head nod as to your support for that effort. And as a veteran, and as a candidate, I look forward to being able to work with a variety of stakeholders to continue to improve veteran services. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Bill, and veterans, for all of us, not only in this community here in Moscow, but for all of us, is very, very important throughout our state and our nation, so it is a big deal for us. So, Gary, you can maybe post that time and keep in contact with Mr. Gosling, we'll go from there. Sound good? Okay, others would like to come up? Please announce your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Margaret Dibble, one-one-three-one Jack Shaw Road, and I'm, although I am on the Moscow Pathways Commission, I'm here tonight as president of the Board of the LeTao Trail Foundation. And I've been thinking, with the formation of this commission that happened over a year ago, headed up by Margaret Littlejohn, since she died a bit over a year ago, and one project that was very near and dear to her heart, that was, nothing has happened on, is the Blackbird Crossing project out on Paradise Path. After Margaret died, a lot of, got a lot of contributions to the LeTao Trail Foundation in her name, and because that project was so near and dear to Margaret's heart, I would like to direct some of that to the Blackbird Crossing site, because it is, I'm afraid, one of the less attractive sections of the Paradise Path. It would be extremely beneficial to the LeTao Trail Foundation, because everybody thinks the LeTao Trail starts there, even though those of us who know, know it's, it starts a little further out of town. Anyway, I would very much like the city to, to start moving on and doing something about that. I do have some, some money towards it, and there are other people who have expressed an interest in that, and I think it would be a great benefit, both to the, to the Moscow Pathway system and to the LeTao Trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Mayor.
Gary, could we get maybe from the next council meeting a report on that, so that I can report, or have you report, the monies that have been designated for that?
Certainly, and perhaps I can talk to, see if we can get some information about the LeTao Trail donation too, so we can see how we could leverage that.
We'll get back to Margaret on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret.
Okay.
Hi, Mayor. My name is Brandon Mitchell. I live at twenty-four oh-five Cambridge Court here in Moscow. I took over the local Jiffy Lube back in January first of twenty thirteen, and at that point, we had put some, some flags out in front of our shop to draw attention, because we're set back a little bit off of the highway there. And so since that day, we haven't had any problems with it, and then just recently, apparently, there was a complaint about a, another local business, and there are temporary signs that are put out front, and so we've been asked to remove our flags from there, but as I read through the code, I don't see where it addresses it as a flag, because a temporary sign has a different description than the flags do. And so I'm trying to look for just a little bit of clarification, I guess, on, on whether my flags can stay posted. Their flags are called Swisher Flags, similar to what they have over at Bonkers across the whole front of their, their place of business, and so I keep them clean, I keep them nice, and, and new ones whenever I need to get new ones, so I try to keep it clean for the city, but I guess I just need a little bit more clarification on those, so that I can get those, or so hopefully I can keep those flying.
Okay, well, Brandon, Bill, have you, or Les, whoever, or Rod, I don't care, but anybody addressed...
Community Development would be handling that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the question is?
Flags. He's got flags.
I've got Swisher Flags in front of my business.
A question, Brandon, you said somebody approached you, somebody from the city approached you?
Yeah, it was somebody from the city. I think the last name was Rhodes, I'm not positive, it was a female.
Okay.
And I can't remember the name, I'd have it, I'd be able to look it up.
Okay, sure.
If I might, we did receive a complaint on temporary signage that was in, that was in front of a business located on the Renaissance Mall on the Pullman Road. I think it was the vape shop that had the flag banners up front. It was actually, under the city code, are defined as being temporary signs, and they don't meet the dimensional requirements. You may recall, the council about seven years ago reviewed the matter of temporary signs outside of the downtown central business district. At that point in time, temporary signage was not allowed. The council considered the matter and approved and allowed for sandwich board signs, so there are specific dimensional requirements for any type of portable signage. Those particular banners don't meet that requirement for portable signage, so they, the individual has the opportunity to do portable signs as is allowed, and you may have noticed, the vape shop did take down their banners and put out a portable sandwich board type sign, so that is allowable under the code. Otherwise, all of the signage has to meet the, the requirements of, of the sign code.
Well, Bill, would you get Mr. Mitchell your number or something, so you could discuss it with him, and, because he, his concern was he really didn't know what to do, and how it works, so if you would go over that with him, I'd certainly appreciate that.
Sure.
Or have somebody go over that with him, so he knows exactly what it is.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mayor.
Dan, Dan had it.
Yeah, I was, so Bill, has code enforcement then gone around all over town and had the, had the flags taken down? Because I know there's, I've seen them in several other places, other than, than just there at that Renaissance Mall.
There were three locations that we were, I think, aware of, that Becky went and did have some conversations, so we had, those sites were discussed. If there are others, we can certainly take a look at. I was not aware of the Bonkers location.
Okay, Walter?
My question exactly, are we applying the, you know, the rules evenly across town?
That's how the gentleman was contacted, because we, those were the ones that we were aware of, and we were making sure that we were contacting all of those that we were aware of, but certainly we can take a look and make sure that there's none others. There are a few others that are being allowed as, under temporary signage, that are allowed during grand opening, other type events, they're allowed for a limited duration, up to sixty days for a grand opening type event, so the frontier, or not, Frontier, I think, Office has some there, they're permitted as temporary signs for that sixty-day time period. Beyond that, since sixty-day time period, it has to either comply with permanent signage standards, or our portable signage standards.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Others would like to come forward? Okay, with that, we were going to move on to item number five, with his citizens' commission report, Moscow Pathways Commission, Dave Schott, you will be presenting. Welcome, Dave.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. As the mayor said, I'm David Schott, I'm the new Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. I'd like, it's my pleasure to introduce Jonathan Grayden, who graduated from the University of Idaho in two thousand and thirteen with a degree in journalism. As one who lives a car-free life, he joined the Paradise Path Task Force in the summer of two thousand and fourteen, seeking to serve the community within the fields of cycling and pedestrian safety. Jonathan has served as the chair of the Moscow Pathways Commissions for nearly a year now, excuse me, and he's here to present their annual report, so.
Thank you, Dave, for introducing me. Mayor, council members, community members, I represent the Moscow Pathways Commission, which, according to our mission statement, promotes and advises the development of a path system in and around Moscow, embracing three important community concerns: active transportation, recreation, and resource conservation enhancement, which ties in very closely with Earth Day, as the mayor announced. First, I wanted to go over a quick year in review of some of our accomplishments. As a group, we did community outreach, looked at some improvements, and did some advising. Under community outreach, we did the farmer's market booth three times, I believe, during the summer, and where we had the tables set up with the little sandwich board, and I'll show that later, and we took in community feedback, got the word out about the pathways, because, associated with a lot of new people coming to town, students, everybody, they didn't know about that, so it was pretty cool. In the summer, we did a path tour, starting up at the Mountain View Park section on the north end of town, rode down, including part of the new Greenway Pilot that Transportation has been working on, and we rode along the Paradise Path section to Berman Creekside Park, where we enjoyed some refreshments, and that was really cool. We had a couple kids on there, some community members. For our improvements, we did a new tree and bench in honor of Margaret Littlejohn. As Margaret Dibble mentioned, she passed away from cancer just over a year ago, and was highly involved in the community. Very big steps to fill in for my part and for a bunch of other people. We got the Troy Highway underpass at Steiner Avenue, White Avenue, we got that approved and in the process of seeking grant funding. We also heard and fielded a citizen issue with the upkeep and future of Berman Creekside Park, and two of our members on the commission are helping coordinate with friends of Berman Creekside, outside of the commission, but community involvement there to revitalize the park. For advising, we heard some feedback on the proposed Peekaboo Estates on the north end of town, between Orchard and Mountain View. That was where in our master plan, there had been a path section supposedly, was supposed to be there. We gave our feedback on ways to coordinate with the development of the estates while maintaining the integrity of the path system, and I believe we satisfactorily saw that through. We also are coordinating on signs with, on orphan paths within the city limits, basically little rights, pedestrian rights of way that are city property that people might not know about. For instance, there is one on Mountain View Street on the north end of town where it makes a sharp right-hand corner going down the hill, and so we've been putting signs up to let people know that those are actual path sections they can use. We also have been working on wayfinding signage design with Transportation Commission. We, one of our members, her student friend was, was doing graphic design and was looking at the aesthetics, so then we collaborated with Les McDonald on the actual, Les was looking at the functional aspects of the signage, where, what places would be signed off, where those signs would be, and we provide some input on aesthetic design to keep the motif of the Paradise Path system. Moving on, here is our Moscow Farmer's Market booth. Karen Clifford, one of our members, put this together, and it has photos of all the different path sections, some information on the, on the overall path system, very well done, and showing the activity, showing the various goals of the city commission. We also, this was the Margaret Littlejohn Memorial Bench and Tree, and that is on the Mountain View Path section between Good Samaritan and Mountain View Park, shortly after the left-hand bend when you're heading north. And this bench will be great for families with kids coming down from the park, as well as seniors from Good Samaritan. It's a good midway point to stop and rest, and there's a good view of the Moscow Mountain. So that was something we oversaw and helped collaborate with, as well as with LeTao Trail Foundation and a bunch of other city commissions. Moving on, our current projects and goals. We'll continue the community outreach. We have three times on the Moscow Farmer's Market. I think we will also be participating in the Sustainability Fair, but that is on our next meeting agenda, week from tomorrow. We will be doing some more group rides and path tours and things, getting people involved that way. For improvements, we're looking to paint edge stripes on the whole path system. As many of you noticed, between, through Berman Creekside Park and out to the start of the LeTao Trail, reflective side stripes were put on about three years ago, and so we're looking to do that on the whole path system, because it's very affordable, but the safety benefits are very good, and we're looking at a center stripe through Berman Creekside Park, because of all the winding corners, that was a citizen feedback we heard, and also near Good Samaritan, potentially, with that corner there. We're also potentially looking into the feasibility of a Highway ninety-five underpass near Sweet Avenue. This probably won't be anything that we act on for another year or so, but we're kind of keeping that in mind as the White Avenue underpass works, kind of comes to fruition. We'll also continue our advising, developing wayfinding signage for the whole system. We want to integrate with Safe Routes to School and the Greenways Pilot and other forms of non-motorized transportation to provide a cohesive network. My second point, working with Transportation, Safe Routes to School, we want to develop a comprehensive bike walk map that can be like a trifold brochure that we can hand out to everybody, we can stock at the visitor information centers, things like that. We will also work to make city pathway easements, those orphan paths, better known both to the community and to property owners who might not know that there's an easement there, so just to stave off any potential problems down the road, and looking, over the next several years, looking at the master pathway plan and looking at ways to achieve that, including some development on the west end of town, possibly, just looking at that pathway plan, seeing how we can develop that. I think this is pretty much the end of our presentation, however, our work continues. Do you have any questions?
I've got one question, and this may be a question for either David or Dwight, and you're talking about a comprehensive bike and walk path brochure type of thing. We have one now for bikeways and walkways, don't we, somewhere, is that in Parks and Rec?
We had one from about three years ago that didn't have all of the newer pathways and things on it, and it didn't have the Greenway Pilot. We do have like the comprehensive map, but that's a little bit of information overload for most people. What I'm looking at is something that can be easily digested, you know, here's the pathways, here's the kind of safe routes, here's the greenway.
And the reason I ask that question is there are people coming to our community all the time, and some simplistic, like they don't know a whole comprehensive layout of our town, but they'd sure like to know where the trails and the pathways are, so they could ride bikes or walk or whatever.
Yeah, and that's, that's the goal with this. My background is in journalism with some graphic design experience, so I'm hoping as soon as we get some of the, we're working with Safe Routes to School to nail down some of their pathways, find some of the updated map files. There's a guy who's working with some ArcGIS and other map programs. I can take that map, simplify it, put it into a brochure, you know, fold-out brochure, and then with, on the other panes, you know, contact information, general safety, other information, a little bit about the community, and that is something I think we want to do within the next year or less, if we can.
Well, I'd be very interested in seeing that, so go get them, that'd be great. Walter?
Did I understand that we do have a master plan, and is it up to date, showing what's built and what's not yet built?
I've...
I'm not sure who to address that to.
We need to look at the master plan. I know the master plan that we had was a few years old, and it was, it included, you know, working around with the Ring Road, which, as you know, is, some of that has changed. So I believe we do have the, the, we do have some comprehensive up-to-date maps with the Greenway, the bike routes, and the path system, and we have been working off of those for some of our plans. In fact, that was partly what spurred off with the Peekaboo Estates. The Markandos were, was one of the path, proposed path sections, and they wanted to put a street right through there, so we're working around that.
If, 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 if there's such a document available in a single piece, if, if someone could send the council a copy, we'd probably like to see where we are in terms of, you know, the planning as, as you know it, and what's built, and we can see what's missing, so that when you come back and bring it up to us, we'll have a little better understanding of what you're proposing.
Yeah.
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Steve, I'm afraid I don't know the answer specifically to your question, but we will research it and...
If it exists, I think council would just like to have it sent to them, so we can see it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Jim?
As the liaison to the Pathways Commission, I want to commend Jonathan and the other commission members for the work they've done in the last year advancing human-powered transportation in Moscow, and I think they're doing, they're in, going in the right direction and trying to find pathways that need to be improved and, and do it in an orderly fashion, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, Council, committee.
Okay, we will move on now to item number six, which is a public hearing, proposed amendment of relevant criterion standards. Michael Ray, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members.
Well, Mike's getting his stuff up. I got to share with you folks here, everybody, before we get the public hearing going too much, is that the simplification of these standards for variances, conditional use permits, and special use permits have to be on the Board of Adjustments for four years and two years. As the chair of that commission, this is very nice to see, because it simplifies things so that it's easy for people to understand those documents. So with that, Michael, turn you loose.
Thank you, Your Honor. And this is a project Planning and Zoning Commission's been working on ever since late last year. Took them about four months to, to bring this forward, and really, just taking a look at our, our current criterion standards for certain land use actions that are required for approving or denying of those actions, and so where it originated from was, if you look at Idaho statutes, our Local Land Use Planning Act, we're required by state statutes that any approval or denial of applications be in writing, and that they be set forth within some portion of the city code or appropriate ordinance. And the, really, the intent of setting forth the criterion standards within the code is that you have the interest, interested... you have the interest...interested citizens, applicants, decision-makers. They all know really what the standards are that need to be met in order to obtain a requested permit or approval. And, you know, at the end of a lot of these major land use actions, we have to make a motion to direct staff to write the reason statement of relevant criterion standards, and this is exactly where it comes from, is state code there, so just the portion that's underlined. Looking at our city code, we have the major land use actions on your screen there, comp plan amendments, conditional use permits, planning and developments, special use permits, subdivision plaits, rezones, and variances. And if you look at within our code where the criterion standards are listed, we only have them listed for CUPs, PUDs, special use permits, and variances. So right now, comp plan amendments, subdivision plaits, rezones are currently not codified within our city code, and so that really kind of brings us out of compliance with state code, even though we have these in our applications and carrying through the process, the applicants, decision-making bodies, public, all know what the criteria is, we just have the conflict that they're not in the city code. So really, this amendment is twofold, inserting our current criteria within those portions of city code, and also going through and taking a look at the current criteria and standards that we have, and, you know, streamlining those a bit, making them more predictable for applicants, decision-making bodies, staff, citizens that come to the hearings, so they really know what it takes to approve or deny one of these actions. And so the first one we had taken a look at was comprehensive plan amendments, and we had looked at about 10 to 12 different jurisdictions throughout Idaho. There was, I think, Pullman, and we also looked at Missoula throughout this process to compare our criteria with theirs, and it really ranged from, you know, the extremely simple to the very lengthy, you know, maybe some of them had 10-plus criteria and really detail-oriented. We decided to hinge more on the simplistic side with the revisions to our criteria, and so these are the recommendations coming from Planning and Zoning Commission. And so with the comp plan, of course, we'd be inserting it within the, actually, section on rezones, is where we'd be inserting these criterion standards, since we currently don't have them, and I'll just run through them real quick. Feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions. So come up with the first criteria, the proposed comprehensive plan amendments consistent with comp plan goals, objectives, and implementation actions. This is really essentially what we had before. It's a little bit different. When we updated our 2009 comprehensive plan, it was restructured, and so that's the change you see here, the implementation actions has been added to that sentence. The proposed comprehensive plan amendment would provide for a logical and orderly location of land uses, community services, and facilities. The use is expected to occur as a result of the comp plan amendment will be compatible with the surrounding area. Size-type density of development expected to occur as a result of the comp plan amendment will not place an undue burden on delivery of services provided by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction. I know it's a lengthy sentence there, but that's specifically what's directed of municipalities within state code. They have that...they pretty much hand you that criteria underneath the comp plan section of the state code. The proposed comprehensive plan amendment is deemed to be appropriate in consideration of changing conditions within the community that are not reflected within the current comp plan, such as new development, redevelopment, land use patterns and/or trends, traffic patterns and/or volume, market demands, community division and/or needs, capital improvements or new or revised city plans. Looking at conditional use permits, the revised criteria, since we already have it, proposed use conditionally permitted use within the zoning district, just wanted to establish that right away within that specific criterion. Character, the proposed use will be in harmony with the neighborhood and surrounding land uses. Proposed use as approved or approved with conditions will not generate nuisances that would be injurious or detrimental to adjoining properties of the neighborhood. It's including but not limited in noise, dust, glare, vibration, odors, and the like. Location, design, and size of the proposed use will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. The use will not endanger the public health, safety where proposed, and that the use meets all applicable development standards of the zoning code. Moving on to plan unit developments, proposed PUD is consistent with the comp plan. PUD is consistent with the intents and purposes of the chapter, so that'd be the chapter of the zoning code. Proposed PUD is compatible with the character and uses of the surrounding area. Public service and utilities are available, can be made available, and are adequate to accommodate the proposed PUD. Proposed PUDs will not endanger the public health or safety. And the residential densities proposed land uses and design proposed within the PUD promote the innovative, efficient, economic, and attractive development of the subject property. Looking at the variance criteria, this is one that we had went from about five criteria to down to three. There's some redundancy within the current language, and we eliminated that, and that reduced it a little bit, and also eliminated one criteria that was a little bit problematic over the years. So what we ended up with was, the applicant has demonstrated that special conditions and/or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the property, which are not applicable to other properties similarly situated in the same zoning district, and the applicant has demonstrated because of those special conditions, the applications of the zoning code would not impose or would impose undue hardship and would deprive the property owner of rights commonly enjoyed by owners of the other properties similarly situated in the same zoning district. And the granting of the variance will not be in conflict with the public interest or injurious to property or persons in the vicinity of the subject property. Looking at subdivision plaits, of course, we'd be inserting this within the subdivision code. Proposed subdivision in conformance with all applicable city code requirements, it's in conformance with the comp plan. We've got public services and utilities are available or can be made available and are adequate to accommodate the proposed subdivision. Proposed subdivision will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare, and a lot of these come back to that, you know. If you notice the overlap within all the criteria of the land use actions, a lot of it relates to comp plan, meeting code requirements, and then not detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare. Looking at zoning district amendments, we'd be inserting this within the zoning code as well. Proposed rezones consistent with the comp plan goals, objectives, and implementation actions would provide for a logical and orderly location of land uses and community services and facilities. Use is expected to occur as a result of the rezon will be compatible with the surrounding area. Size-type density of development expected to occur as a result of the rezon will not place an undue burden upon delivery of services provided by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction, same sentence from state code. And the size-type density of development expected to occur as a result of the rezon can be adequately served by existing transportation network, public facilities, and services. Planning and Zoning Commission, like I mentioned, had worked on this for a few months, and they ended up conducting the public hearing on the ordinance that happened on March 9th of this year, and they recommended approval to city council. And staff's recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing, and after considering any testimony, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Dan?
So Mike, we'll go back to kind of what we started with. Right now, in all of these, we do add relevant criterion standards to our decisions, but even though it's not in the code, we kind of just make something that will fit, but now we'll have...this is basically giving us a map to let P&amp;Z and staff, you know, these are what we need to meet.
Yeah, and we've always had criteria for all of our land use actions, it's just that we only have four right now that are codified in the city code. Three of them are contained within our applications, and so we've been consistent with those. We're not making those up. We've used those for the last, you know, 10, 12 years. It's just that, you know, a little inconsistent with state code if we don't have actually all of the criteria, and so just be inserting those three that we're missing in order so somebody could, you know, flip to that section of the code, know the criteria that they're required to meet, and if they meet the criteria, then the land use action should be approved.
And Dan, in addition to that, a bunch of those are dealt with, even though the P&amp;Z heard this, went through it, the Board of Adjustments are affected by hat, these things on here, so, you know, and it's significant for them. Other questions for Mike? For Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. My compliments to community development, yourself, and P&amp;Z for doing this, it's way above my pay grade. I would have one question from the packet. It states that the city is required by state statute to base decisions of certain land use actions, et cetera, and then the staff identified that the criterion standards for approving or denying certain things were not codified within Moscow City Code. My question is, is everything that we're proposing doing tonight a product of state code where we do not comply, or are there some things in there wherein going through all of this yourself or P&amp;Z found, well, we might as well do so-and-so in addition while we're here?
Yeah, it was more or less, state code requires us to have criterion standards, but they don't dictate what those are. We're up to, you know, it's up to us to, or the council, to determine what those criterion standards are. So the, I guess, the main objective was to insert those criterion standards that we're currently missing from our code in order to get in line with state statutes, but at the same time, we wanted to take a look at, you know, updating the current criterion standards, and there was mainly a few maybe variances, you know, just dealing with the criterion standards over the years. I know that some members of the Planning and Zoning Commission had expressed some concern about some of the language and some of the words wording that was used on those, and I know that as staff dealing with those, we've had our, you know, a bit of our own concerns with some of the criteria, and so just looking at all those other jurisdictions really shedded some light on, you know, the different variations between, like I mentioned, simplistic and real detail-oriented, and, you know, just as we ended up working through each land use action, ended up, I think, really improving the language on a lot of them and making them a little bit more straightforward and streamlined, and that's really how we ended up, and we ended up changing most of them.
Thank you.
Other questions before we open the public hearing?
Thank you, Mike.
I will open the public hearing, and I will entertain any comments for, against, or in general comments on this. Saying nobody...okay, good, come up, please state your name and address, and even though we know who you are, Victoria, we need to have the rest of the audience.
Victoria Sierra 121 North Lily, Moscow. I was just gonna...I thought...I wasn't planning on saying anything, but, you know, there's so much work involved in this, and I've watched it in planning and zoning. I watch on TV Board of Adjustments when it comes on. There's just a huge amount of work, and they've gone through, all of the staff, P&amp;Z, gone through it with a fine-tooth comb and done a great job of shaping this up. No matter what it says, they've shaped it up, so I just think that should be acknowledged. It's very important.
Thank you, Victoria. And with that being said, it helps those two commissions, Planning and Zoning, and Board of Adjustments, it makes it...because the commissioners themselves are working through that process, and sometimes it makes them kind of wonder if they're doing the right thing, and so it was a good step, and yeah, it was great work. Thank you. I will close the public hearing and turn over to council. John?
I am no longer the liaison for planning and zoning, but I was when this process started, and I can assure you that essentially no stone was left unturned by planning and zoning, and through the information that we got from staff. Mike was the one that brought it in, and consequently, I think they covered everything, and up until the first of the year after that, the new councilperson Bonzo can comment on how they did, but I think they did a great job. They covered everything needed to be covered, and they put us in a position so that the city and the developers of any particular piece of property have got a much better idea on what their roadmap is, if they need changes or anything of that nature, so I've got to support this.
Well, in concurrence, I'd just like to go ahead and move...
Go ahead.
...to approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Can I second it? Okay, I have a motion by Catherine, and a second by Art to conduct...we finish this, to approve the ordinance under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, that it be read by title and published by summary. Before I take a roll, any other comment, councilors?
You sure you don't want the mayor to read it in its entirety?
I will start with John.
Aye.
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 And I. Respect that last comment that Walter Steed said from Maricots. We'll move on to item number seven. Whoops, sorry, Jim.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. My good job, staff.
Your Honor, you need to read the title.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The title.
Forgot about it, we do have a new ordinance here.
Number four, just a second. Number four.
Ordinance 2016-04, is that correct? Okay. An ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, municipal corporation of the state of Idaho providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title IV, Chapter 7, 8, and 9, and Title V in Chapter 1 providing for the amendment of the relevant criterion standards for certain land use actions, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Now we will move on to item number seven, and it will be Becky. We were talking about a lot division proposal at 501 South Polk Street. Becky?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evening, councilors. So before you tonight is a lot division request for a parcel currently addressed as 501 South Polk Street. The subject property is located on the west side of Polk Street between East 3rd and East 6th Street. The property is zoned multifamily residential R4, as well as all surrounding nearby parcels, with the exception of a few parcels that are owned by Leita County to the southwest. Take a little bit closer look at the parcel. You can see there's an existing single-family dwelling structure in the center of the lot and a very small accessory structure to the north, and the current access to the lot is off of Polk Street with the drive located on the north side of the house, as well as the current parking for that residence. This is a site plan that was submitted by the applicant for the proposed lot division, showing the new parcel lines here, which creates a flaglot configuration to the north of the existing structure and in the rear, and that results in a parcel of 7,854 square feet. The width of the lot at the Polk Street frontage is 20 feet in width, and that 20 feet is maintained for a distance of 86.8 feet, as required by the code for flaglots. Existing within the flaglot portion then would be this small accessory structure, which when setbacks are applied to that flaglot, that structure would not meet minimum required setbacks, so that would be...it would be necessary for that to be removed with the division. And then as well, as I mentioned, the existing drive is located to the north of the house, and the parking for the house currently exists in that location, and so if these lots were to be conveyed separately, it would be necessary for either parking to be located on this lot for the home, or in a parking easement to be granted for the two parcels for the parking to remain at that current location. The second parcel then is this remaining rectangle with 5,035 square feet and a minimum or a width at Polk Street of 58 feet. The property has been surveyed, and the house is shown as being setback 3.47 feet from the new north property line, which falls short of the required side yard setback, which is five feet, so it would be necessary for the home to be relocated in order to satisfy the minimum side yard setback. The structure would meet all other setbacks. Here's just a look at the aerial image again with the proposed new lot line overlaid. As I mentioned, the structure is located in the R4 zone. The minimum lot width for parcels in the R4 zone is 50 feet, and the minimum lot area is 5,000 square feet or 800 square feet per dwelling unit. Setbacks in the R4 zone are 15 feet in the front or 20 feet for a garage that's facing the street. Rear yard setback is 20 feet, and side yard is a minimum of five feet, but the sum of the two yards shall not be less than 15 feet. And the code stipulates that for flaglots, the flagpole portion of the lot shall not exceed 150 feet and shall not be less than 20 feet in width. This proposal was brought before the Public Works Finance Committee last Monday, and there was a request for some additional information in regards to the number of units or the level of density that could be constructed on the lot. So I just first would like to reiterate that this parcel's in the R4 zone, and therefore the subject property as it is today would be allowed...any permitted use in the R4 zone would be allowed to be constructed on the parcel as it is. would be allowed to be constructed on the parcel as it is today. And then if the lot division was approved, any permitted use within the R4 zone could be constructed on either of the two lots, as they meet all the minimum size and width requirements. As I previously mentioned, the minimum lot area in the R4 zone is 5,000 square feet, or 800 square feet per dwelling unit. But simply applying that 800 square feet per dwelling unit to a lot is not an accurate method for calculating the level of density that could be constructed. The biggest limiting factor for the number of units is going to be the number of off-street parking spaces that are required, the area required for vehicle circulation, and then should a development require more than four parking spaces, that kicks in landscape buffer requirements, and that further restricts the buildable area. And then additionally, on a smaller sized lot, building setbacks could restrict the number of units that could be developed. So, this image here shows the setbacks applied to the flaglot, which results in an approximate square foot of 3,230 for the buildable area on that flaglot. So, ultimately, it's very difficult to define the level of density or the number of units that could be constructed on a lot. Again, it's restricted by those factors that I've mentioned. And also, it just depends on the level of creativity that the designer can come up with for fitting the number of units that they desire, the size of those units, and the size of the bedrooms in them, and then also the number of bedrooms, which dictates those number of off-street parking requirements. So, per city of Moscow, requirements for lot divisions, the property owners within 600 feet of the subject property were notified, and the site was posted seven days prior to the public meeting that was held before Public Works Finance Committee. There was one letter submitted, a public comment prior to the committee meeting, and there were several individuals that came out and spoke at the committee meeting last week. And there was, so staff's recommendation tonight is to take public comment, if applicable, and approve the lot division request with the following three conditions, each occurring at the time that the property would be conveyed. The first is that the existing single-family dwelling be relocated a minimum of 1.53 feet to the south in order to satisfy the five-foot minimum side yard setback requirement. The second is for the existing structure to be removed, the existing accessory structure to be removed to satisfy setback requirements. And finally, that an access or parking easement be recorded against the property if the access and parking to the existing structure will remain in its current location. And I'm available for questions.
Okay, Becky, as you had stated, this was held before Public Works and Finance on March 28th. This is not a public hearing. However, public comment, I think, would be appropriate, so I'm going to allow testimony from the public. Council, Walter? Before I do that, we'll get conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Becky, if I may, a question for you, and maybe Rod Hall as well. Condition number three, the last bullet that you have up there. The wording of that seems a little less than specific to me. Does it need to be that the flaglot will guarantee an access easement for access and parking for the virtually square lot that's left up at the front of the property, the existing house? I mean, you're not asking that, because there are going to be two lots. Are they each going to give the other access easements, or they just need the flag piece to give access to the non-flag piece?
Well, if the parking and the drive is to remain, and they don't want, they don't desire to create a new curb cut and a drive and parking on the second south lot, then they would need to have an easement stating that the off-street parking for that structure is satisfied by the parking on the adjacent property, if that answers your question.
Partially, but Rod, I'm sure Rod has something. Is my question clear?
Yes, but it's a great attorney answer. It depends. It depends on what they're going to do and what they're going to build on it. It's going to, if they're not going to have parking on that front lot, then they'll have to have some agreement with the other property owner or the other lot to, for that parking. So, it just depends on what they're going to do.
So, the easement would need to be from the owner of the flaglot to the owner of the non-flag lot? Is that correct?
Yes, to use their property, yes. That flaglot, that access to the back will be owned by the back lot.
Okay.
And so, if they're going to, part of their development agreement, use that for parking, they would have to have an easement for that.
And if I may, the wording in the recommendation as it is, is adequate to take care of that, regardless of whether or not the two lots created by this are owned by one person or different persons?
Yes.
Okay.
Jim?
Regarding the same thing, the third, the third condition there says, if the existing structure will remain in its current location, and the first one is, it has to move, the structure has to move.
It's just if the, if access or parking for the existing structure, not if the existing structure. So...
The existing structure can't, in order for this to be approved, you can't have an existing structure in its current location. It has to move.
Right. And maybe it needs to be worded better, but that's not what it's intending to say. It's intending to say if the, if the access, if they don't choose to create a new drive on that other lot and new parking over there, then they need to have an easement for where it's currently located. So, it's saying if the access and the parking remains, not the, not the structure. It perhaps could be reworded.
Something needs to be reworded in that third thing, so that they don't contradict each other.
Well, it's saying if access or parking to the existing structure will remain in its current...
Or to a structure, any structure.
In the front lot, I guess, would be what you'd...
No, that's not correct. I think we were just talking about if they don't move that existing structure. They'll have to address the parking issue.
No.
Well, they can't do it at all unless they do move the, it has to move over, it doesn't meet the setback requirement.
It has to move.
Yeah. See, that's a parking issue.
Okay, so Gary, do we need to reword this?
It's clear to me.
Okay. How about Bill's pretty sharp on these things. What do you think, Bill? Well, you could have stabbed him.
Well, I was just going to concur with Gary. I mean, the way it's, the intent here is to not have the property separately conveyed if parking is going to remain in its existing location without reserving an easement across the property to ensure access once that property gets conveyed. So, it is, I mean, it is stating that an access parking easement be recorded against the property if access/parking to the existing structure, maybe it should be access/parking for the existing structure will remain in its current location. That is, it's currently that parking is located on what is going to be the new lot and access to it is gained across that new lot. If it's going to remain there, and the code does allow for parking to be either on the lot, on the lot that the principal use is occurring upon, or on a lot directly adjacent to it, so it is legal for it to be adjacent to it. We just want to ensure that there's continued legal access as that property is conveyed to a separate property owner that ensures their right to have access, because that parking is a condition of their continued occupancy of that structure.
Okay. Other questions?
So, I guess my only suggested change might be if access/parking for the existing structure will remain in its current location. The two might be just a little bit confusing. We are, we're kind of combining access and parking jointly together. It's really, it is somewhat access to the structure, but really, it's access to the parking spaces that are serving that structure that are going to be now located on an adjacent property once they convey it.
Okay.
But that's, I mean, I don't have any problem with the access or the parking or easement or any of that. It's just that it says, it says the existing structure in its current location, where the first point says it can't stay there. You're not going to convey the property if the current structure is in its current location.
Correct, but I think it's saying if the access/parking to the existing structure will remain in its current location. Not that the structure will remain in the current location, but the access/parking for that structure will remain in its current location.
Okay. It refers to the parking, not the structure.
Correct, correct. They've got an option that they decide they're going to put another driveway and put their parking on their own property, and then they don't have to grant it.
So, Jim, to help you understand, and thank you very much for doing that overlay, because you, it makes complete sense now, especially since you filled in what they could possibly do. That's kind of what we were trying to get to, and that, so it's really clear for me now, so, thank you.
Walter, you have another?
Well, Bill, if I may. Bill, what if for the existing structure, we'll move to the end of that sentence? Would that help a little? Your boss says no, so never mind.
Okay. We'll move on. Bill, you don't have to answer that, so there we go.
Just say to any structure on the other lot.
Well, we're really talking about the parking that serves the existing, because it currently, the driveway and the parking is on the other, the new proposed lot. And if it's going to remain there, they need to make sure that there's an easement that continues the right to have access there. They also have the choice of moving it solely on and having a separate driveway. Really, it's hard to predict right now. They don't have any development plans today. They're just trying to, I think, get the approval for lot division. We will address it at the time that they are proposing to develop that process, but we just wanted to make sure that they were thinking of, and that it was on record that needed to record that easement if it was going to remain on the adjacent property.
Okay. Jim, you got another point you want to make?
Well, couldn't it just be worded that the access/parking easement recorded against the property to the newly created property, not, wouldn't have anything to do with the structure?
I think you need to talk about the lot, not the structure.
It's about the lot, not the structure. Yeah. So, if you take the structure out of it, then it makes...
Especially since you're talking about having to move the structure.
But the parking serves that structure.
Well, it serves that lot.
But both lots are new.
Yeah.
Really, it's about the existing structure. Yes.
If you want to take the word "two" out and replace it with "serving," then it becomes clear that...
Okay, yeah, then it's, that would work.
Anything that makes it clear that you're not, that it's not contradictory.
Yeah.
Well, I think we could probably tweak one word there, Becky.
All right, sounds good.
To confuse all of us up here, so now we can move on, everybody. Okay, thank you, Becky. I'm going to, if there's anybody from the public who would like to comment on this, you're welcome to come forward. If you do, please state your name, address, and I'll give you three minutes.
Your honor, we have a letter from the applicant we would like to hand out. I'm sure that's what Scott's going to talk about.
Okay, hand out to the council here. Is this something new today? Something, Gary, that nobody's seen before?
Nobody's seen it yet.
Okay, Scott, name your name and address, sir.
Scott Becker, 405 South Washington, and I'm with Hodgins Associates. And the letter before you, the applicant has asked me to read the letter to you, if you don't mind. So, Mayor Lambert, city council members, thank you for your consideration of this lot division proposal located at 501 South Polk Street. As you know, the subject property is located in an R4 zone and stated in this, as stated in the city council, or Moscow City zoning code, the R4 zoning district provides the most intense residential uses permitted in the community. The characteristics of the neighborhood reflect this zone and are a mix of single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, large apartment complexes, and professional offices throughout many blocks of the R4 zoning. The subject property is in close proximity to Latah County Courthouse, general business zone, and a short distance from downtown city business, or city central business zoning. Several neighbors have stated in the Public Works Committee meeting that they felt the existing house was in disrepair and expressed concerns that it will be removed, which could increase the density if decided to build on the current house footprint. In response to these concerns, the current house is far from a state of disrepair, and you can see in the pictures there that it's actually pretty good. It is a good rental property, and we have a plan, we have plans to hold it long term. It currently has a post-in-pier foundation that is adequate based on an inspection report that we had from a professional inspector. If the lot division is approved, we plan to move the house further south to meet the setbacks of the new lot, and we'll install a concrete foundation at that time. If the lot division is not approved, there's no problem with the house sitting as it is, and we'll still have the opportunity to build as many units as allowed in the R4 zone. In fact, we could potentially put in more lot, more units not having the lot division, since we don't have to meet the setback requirements for one, for one lot instead of two. For this case, the potential density decrease of the lot division upon granting the proposed lot division, which should be a positive factor for those concerned about building on this property. At this point in time, we do not have specific plans for the proposed back lot, as we do not want to proceed with planning and designing phase without the lot division approval. The current lot layout has a feel of two parcels with the house in the front and a lot and large open space going west with the driveway already in place to access that portion. Prior to the purchase of the property, this property sat on the market for a duration of 619 days. It seems others had ample time to purchase the property if they were greatly concerned about the potential building and maintaining the character and heritage and natural setting of the lot, as several individuals stated at the Public Works Committee meeting. The sudden interest in this property began once the public notice went out for the lot division, and in my opinion, many neighbors simply do not want anything going on with this property since it's close to their homes. While we can appreciate this perspective, this is an unrealistic expectation for a property in an R4 zone conducive to high-density building and multifamily units. We feel the lot division is a reasonable request based on R4 zoning, large size of the current lot, and considering that we have, we have the ability to build additional units on this property. Granting this lot division will result in improvements to the current house by moving it further to the south and installing a concrete foundation. It will reduce the overall density of the property due to the constraints of meeting the setback requirements for these two lots instead of one. And then that was, you can see that's by, thank you for your time, Jared and Deborah Nichols, and Dewey and Nicole Whiting. I talked to, I talked to Jared a little bit further, and just to kind of find out what his plans are, and really, he didn't want to go into a lot of planning and spend a lot of time unless, unless he could get a lot division, then he could look at a...
Well, that's understandable.
Look at, look at something, what he could do, similar structure. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I think his letter speaks.
Well, I think you're fine, Scott. If somebody needs something, get your backup here, and from there, I'll, if there's others that would like to come before us and speak, that's great.
My name is Jonathan Lambert, and I live at 419 South Polk Street, which is just to the north of the property. Mayor Lambert and the city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here tonight because I believe it is important for the city council and the city of Moscow to have an understanding of how the neighborhood property owners and the residents would like the neighborhood to be appreciated in our desire to maintain the neighborhood's identity, character, and heritage. A neighborhood history that includes where Carol Ryer Brink was raised and drew inspiration for her writing. Just because a particular use is allowed in an R4 neighborhood, does it necessarily mean that it is compatible with the neighborhood's identity, character, and heritage? There are no flagpole lots in this area between Sixth and D Streets and Main and Blaine Streets. When you look, sorry, it's, yeah, when you look at the zoning map, you'll see that this area has no R3 buffers zone between the R2 and the R4. So, you see the R3 at the north and the south, and it just ends, and there's no R3 in that My understanding is that this past, and then in the past, this neighborhood may have been better suited for R4 designation, especially when there was a fraternity house in the middle of the block. But due to the desirability of the Fort Russell Historic District, this neighborhood has made a significant shift to owner-occupied homes. There are now more children playing and enjoying the neighborhood than I have ever seen in the 14 years living there. Two different homes in the neighborhood are currently under contract to be sold after being on the market for less than one week, and both of these houses will be owner-occupied. People like to point out that there are already a multifamily apartment complex at 516 South Polk, which is close to the corner of Sixth, but this unit has also been owner-occupied. This lot division has potential for at least two duplexes, a parking lot, and a small alley with no requirement for any curb cut or driveway updates. In addition, the developers would also, could also choose to widen the current curb cut and add an additional one to the south, eliminating two additional parking spaces on the street. Consider for a moment the requirement to space roll cart garbage and recycling containers three feet apart in the street. If there are four units, there will be eight roll carts that theoretically will be... If there are four units, there will be eight roll carts that theoretically will need 35-plus feet of empty street frontage to be disposed of. Street parking availability is a neighborhood facility that cannot accommodate any further increase in this land use intensity. You are aware that another option is for the developers to raise the current home and build a dense multifamily unit they can squeeze, as dense of multifamily unit they can squeeze in. These options do not give the current residents and property owners any positive outcome. We, when do the property rights and the property values of the neighborhood as a unit come into consideration, or is it just a simple issue of it's allowed in R4 zone? Is the city's desire to convert this neighborhood to higher density and drive out the owner-occupied families when in fact the neighborhood has been headed in the opposite direction? I would like to encourage the developers to put a foundation under the current house, fix it up, and create an excellent home for a family to enjoy. There were many, many people interested in purchasing this house, but they were not able to get bank financing because of the lack of the foundation. That is why it was on the market for so long. I am confident there'd be no problem selling it if there was a foundation under it. Also, I'd also like to ask the city to examine the continuation of the R3 buffer corridor east of Van Buren and west of Howard Street, protect the neighborhood's identity, character, and heritage, and maybe even consider creating a new Carol Ryer Brink Historic Neighborhood.
Thank you. We're here just talking about a subdivision, or a subdivision lot, is what we're talking about tonight. So thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
And if somebody would like to come forward, other folks would like to come forward? Please limit your remarks to three minutes, if you will. State your name and address.
Hello, I'm David Slater, and I'm at 509 South Polk, so I'm at the property directly south of the property that we're talking about. And I must say that I am torn. I do like the idea of not having a large dwelling there, and so it's possible that the, splitting the lot would help decrease the density as opposed to building a larger structure on it. I am, however, concerned about having another structure and more people and more density in the back of that lot, because there is no separation, no privacy towards the back of that lot with mine. There's a temporary wire fencing, there is a bit of wood fencing that's falling down in the backyard, and then there's some chicken wire and lilacs that serve as a fence along the back. What I'd hope to see is better separation if this is to be developed or if this is to be split, both on the north and the south side. You know, I want, I think the big thing, and what we heard at the prior meeting, was that the new owners of the property wished to maintain the character of the neighborhood, that they wished to make it fit in. I don't know what kind of conditions can be put to see that happen. I think we're all concerned, because we just don't know what will happen. And, you know, probably many of you wouldn't like to live in a house where the backyard then becomes some larger structure that blocks out light and whatnot. So I think we're all, I mean, I'm concerned about that, because I live next door. But I hope that you consider this carefully and try to make the best decision to preserve how the neighborhood looks and how it feels and to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slater.
Okay, counsel. Walter?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a question from Becky. If you would go back to your slide that showed the setbacks on the flag lot? I believe, well, you indicated the 3230 is the footprint, square footage, that could be allowed, considering setbacks, but you also said "and landscaping." What, how does the landscaping apply, dependent upon what might be built to the flag lot?
So this area is just strictly where structures could be placed. It applies a 20-foot rear yard setback, a 10-foot side, and then two 5-foot side yard setbacks. When I mentioned landscaping, I was referring to when a development requires more than four parking spots, it's considered a parking lot, and so therefore it has to meet all parking lot development standards, and that includes landscape buffers. So a landscape buffer, should there be more than four parking spaces, and I should say, parking lots can also be located within setback areas, this is just building setbacks. So the landscape buffer would be required where the parking lot is adjacent to residential properties, or in this case, it would just be where adjacent to residential properties. It's also applied when adjacent to right-of-way. It'd be a three-foot landscape buffer.
In width?
In width, yep, 36 inches in width between the parking and a neighboring property line.
Becky, to Walter's point, so that if somebody brought in, because nobody knows what the plan is for this, if this goes through. So when that plan is brought to developing, that is, at that time, that's when you folks tell them and explain about the setbacks and how many parking spots there would be and the criteria for the buffer.
Absolutely.
Other councillors got questions they want to bring up? Okay. I can't make a motion, folks, I'm the mayor, so somebody...
Well, I'll make a motion, then.
John, or hang on a second, Art's got something he wants to bring up.
I was just going to say that I'm very much torn on this particular subdivision proposal, because I really do not like flagpole lots at all. I think that, as was pointed out, within this zoning district, there isn't a flagpole lot anywhere within it, and this would be a change in character for the neighborhood as such. However, I'm also torn by the fact that if the subdivision doesn't go through, the developer is then free to develop it any way he sees fit with any form of multifamily housing and as long as it meets the strictures. So I'm having difficulties trying to parse my mind around which direction I'm going to go, but...
Well, here's a clarification point, or you call it a subdivision, it's actually a lot division. There's a distinct difference between the two, isn't there, Becky?
Yeah, I believe it's when it's, three or fewer lots. Is that right?
Yeah, a lot division. So perhaps I misspoke there, but I still dislike flagpole lots intensely.
Okay.
Well, you've answered every question, and I appreciate the letters. And it looks like there was a lot of talking, which is what needed to happen, so thank you. So I'm going to move to approve the lot division with the conditions, approve the lot division request with the conditions that were stated.
I'll second.
The three conditions.
Okay. We've got a motion by Catherine and a second by John to approve the lot division with the specific...
And the rephrasing of the last one Art just mentioned, we should maybe make sure that the language is clear.
The tweak of the word from...
With the word "serving" added.
Serve instead of "to" on bullet point number three, correct? Everybody good on this? Start with you, Walter.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that passes five to one, so there is approval of that lot division. Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
Thank you for those that testified. Things before us, we will move on to item number eight now, which is downtown restroom bid award, bids that Dwight Curtis will talk about. Good evening, Dwight. How are you?
Well, good evening. Sure, this is a topic everybody's interested in. As you're aware...
You're losing your crowd, but...
And they're not all interested, Dwight, they're leaving.
Okay, not everybody's interested in it. So anyway, tonight, we have a bid award request for you for the downtown restroom project. We went out to bid, had five qualified bidders, and anyway, it came in a little ahead or a little above what we had anticipated, and so I'm going to show you a little slideshow here and then ask for a decision. Just to show you where we're at with the budget at the moment, the project was originally estimated at $157,710. We had $170 budgeted, $170,000 budgeted for this. Since then, as part of the bid prep, we have spent $1,250 of that, leaving $168,750. So that's where we're at. Then through the bids, you can see here, and this was in your packet, the lowest qualified bid was $191,600, the highest one being $237. But you can see the group of the top four fairly tight, so we do believe that this was a good bid. At the Public Works Finance Committee, a lot of questions and needing for a little more detail on some of the other expenditures that are taking place, so you have a really good picture of everything. The design cost for this was $13,070, $70. We estimated the water line to the site to be, it'll be an in-house project, to be about $5,000. The bid prep that we talked about was $1,250, and that total there was about $19,320. If you get down to the project, what's left, of course, the construction of the facility and with the qualified bid with quality contractors was $191,600, contract or construction administration at $8,550, and we had a contingency of $8,000 in there. And that subtotal is $208,150, which overall, you can see on the slide there, $227,470 if you're looking at the entire project. We had, well, what we're asking for tonight is awarding the contract to quality contractors in the amount of $191,600. The authorization to contract with Design West for Construction Administration for the $8,550, and also included in the funding would be $8,000 for contingency. That left us with a $39,400 shortfall. We've identified some possible additional funding. Part of that is a rebate with the URA, the Alturis URA, that, when that closed, and also a possibility of participation by the URA. Mr. Belnap will be speaking to the URA this Thursday, so we do not have that answer yet. That, with those two, that would be $40,000, which would bring us right there, close to the amount of the $208,150. And so in a nutshell, that's where we're at tonight. And I do have some additional information, just for some tidbits, if you need it, because there were some other possibilities discussed, but for the agenda tonight, this is what we have for you.
Well, and I'll remind counsel what we've got here, is we've got bids for a downtown restroom, and that's what you're going to make a determination, one way or the other on that, and it has nothing to do with any other design, any other structures that we're talking about. So with that, I'll turn it over to council for discussion.
Mayor?
Art?
I'll go again. I'll come wade into another one. This was before Public Works and Finance on Mark Twain's... And hence all of the discussion to which Dwight was referring and some of the subsequent provision of more detail. But for sure, Moscow needs a public bathroom, lots of other little communities have them. Garfield has one, heck, even Kolotus has public bathrooms. And the problem is, the costs came in much higher than anticipated, but in a group. And should the bids be rejected, I'm not sure that if, when rebid, we'll see anything come through any lower than what has been presented to us already. So what we're stuck with is trying to find some makeup, funding that is not in the budget and hasn't already been committed, and that's proposed via the URA, which we would have to wait and see whether the URA is willing to step up and assist. But right now, we've got other civic community members, NSA among others, providing the use of their facilities for downtown events, and that could go away tomorrow. And then what happens? Now we've got inconvenience, a bad public reputation for the city, and potential for health concerns as well. So I'm not sure that anything can be done with this notoriously high cost of this project, but getting a properly-built building that's going to last time and has been approved by the Historic Preservation Commission is meeting the design standards of downtown, I think necessitates going forward with it and just choking it down, and if the URA can participate, going ahead with the project, pull the trigger, and just getting the thing done and getting our promise to the city, being one of the council's major goals accomplished and taken care of.
Somebody down here, John, was that you or Dan?
I didn't like this at $156,000. I voted against it at $170,000, so you know which way I'm going to go at $200 and...
Eight thousand seven.
And the reason, I have no problem with a downtown restroom that is put in by the city. I just have a problem with the amount of money that we seem to be wanting to throw at a problem. And consequently, we have not looked as this body at all of the other options, and we seem to be hung up on making this bathroom look like the two buildings that are around it. I disagree with that. I think it's going to be a restroom if we build it, and I think that if it is a restroom, it'll be easily identified as one regardless of what sort of a facade we put on it and regardless of what sort of a roof that we put on it. I remember when the price was $170,000, there was concern that the roof on a one-story bathroom look like the roof on the two- and three-story buildings that surround it. It doesn't make any sense to me. And then as far as the facade of the building, it's too much, in my opinion. We're spending more money, we've got roads to worry about, we've got streets to worry about, and if we're going to be spending $225,000 on a bathroom, I don't think that it says very much for our fiduciary responsibility to the citizens here as to what is going to happen with the money that they pay us in taxes. So I have to, I'm going to vote no.
Dan?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, you know, we do have public restrooms. It's, there are some all over town, there just doesn't have to be one down on Main Street right now. And that's why, you know, Kolotus, you know, they only have Main Street, so it's kind of obvious where you're going to put it. I am pretty upset, though, that this estimate was so far off. Dwight, I think back to East City Park, what did we pay for that one? It's $178,000? I mean, I realize it's three, four years ago, but...
It was $167 for the facility, plus you had the design.
Right.
So I think $184 total.
Okay. Still, cheaper than this, and it's bigger, and that really bothered me a lot, too. I do appreciate and would like to see something that does fit, you know, with a facade that matches downtown, you know? But is it worth that much? I don't like that we've sunk money into it already. It's not as much as I thought it was, but it's still some. I do want to see restrooms downtown, I just, I just find this one a hard one to take a bite of here.
Walter?
Dwight, a question on the slide you just put back up. Is the sewer line cost part of the contractor's $191,000, or is that additional?
It's in a, it's...
No, the sewer is right adjacent, but somebody's got to tie into it.
It's part of the project.
It's part of the $191?
Yes.
I want a downtown public restroom as bad as anybody. I think we need one. I even disagree with John Weber a little bit regarding the fact that we're doing this, I believe John's position is... this, I believe John's position is, at least fifty percent for farmer's market. I think one needs to be down there. I am just totally thankful to NSA for the years that they have made their restroom in the back of their building available for the farmer's market time. It's, it's cost them dollars out of their pocket, because I've gone in there at the end of market and have seen the mess that somebody's got to clean up, so I'm really grateful to them, and I, and the police department opens up their front lobby restrooms, which are not handicapped accessible, but they are down there for the people that know about it. But we, I think we need a public restroom. I just, again, and what, somebody said it, in a sense of council fiduciary responsibility to the citizens, cannot spend four hundred and sixteen dollars a square foot, based upon the two hundred and eight thousand dollar number that Dwight's put up there. Four hundred and sixteen dollars a square foot for this thing, if you count the wing walls that create the privacy to the doors. If you just do the building itself, it goes to six hundred and fifteen dollars a square foot. I've been told the Hope Center, which is different construction, but still commercial, is being built for under a hundred dollars a square foot. My memory is that the L L C on the, on the University of Idaho campus fifteen years ago was built for a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Different time, different bids, I get it. If I may, the grouping of the bids tells me the price that we've gotten is the price to build that particular design now. I think a better bidding climate, that is, when contractors are hungrier, would help the prices some, but I believe that we're chasing a building that we don't have to have. I think there are modular buildings out there that Dwight has found that can look like their brick from any distance, from five feet to fifty feet away, or five hundred feet away, that they might be able to be gotten with either flat or shed roofs, and I would like to, in the end, pursue something like that to see if we can get closer to the budget that we have to build this. Dwight, I don't, I try very hard, and I don't think I very often argue with department heads, I may argue with their boss sometimes, but I don't consider a hundred and twenty-one percent of estimate a little more, or a hundred and twenty-two percent over our budget a little more. I think it's fairly significant, and I am prepared to vote no on this proposal.
Hey, Catherine, we've got two councils haven't spoke, I'd like to hear.
Well, I, I spoke at the Public Works. I think when we had Kathleen Burns present, that was informative, and then we've also been told how many other events happen in the downtown area. People have talked about, you know, taking their kids, and we have, we have people with disabilities that are, their facilities are downtown. We have a lot of people downtown. I think there's more to this than that. I think there's a long-term thinking about this. This was a council goal by these minutes from twenty fourteen?
Or before.
Or before.
Twelve or thirteen.
And I think that we, you, you have definitely thought all about it. I think the commissions have told you what their thoughts are. I'm going to vote for it.
Jim?
I'm very much in favor of the project. I very much want to see that built downtown, but I'm very much troubled by the fact that we're thirty-three percent or something like that over the original estimate, and I just think that Dwight and his staff are more competent in, in coming up with an estimate of what the project should have cost. I think that was what they came up with, is the cost estimate, and I, and I, I don't think they're that far off. So the, the fact that the bids came in that side bothers me, and I think if, if they're going to have, if it's going to have to be that much, if things have changed that much since that estimate was created, then we need to go back and do something to the design of the project to make it more economical. I'll agree with, with John and Walter that I think we do have a fiduciary responsibility to not overspend on amenities, and this, you know, it's not a necessity. We've got along with it for, since eighteen ninety or whatever, and we could probably do it another year until we figure out a way to do it within the, within what we've budgeted. And if at some point we determine that it has to, the budget has to be more, well, then we'll have to come up with the money somehow, but tonight, I'm going to have to vote no on it, based on what I know about the situation.
John?
Well, I would then make a motion that we turn down all of the bids and start from ground zero.
Okay, we've got a motion by John and a second by Jim to disqualify all bids and start over, right? Start with Walter.
I believe it's rejected.
Rejected.
Yep. Aye.
No.
No?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, then it fails. Okay, we'll move on to item number nine. Gary, budget hearing for set coming up this summer. Thank you, Dwight, for all the work and effort you put into this, and other city staff members.
Thank you, Your Honor. Idaho Code requires us to set prior to April thirtieth of each year our public hearing on the budget. This year, we're a little bit clunky on the budget since we're in between finance directors, so staff's doing a great job assisting in putting that together, but we thought it was probably the best way to move the budget. We usually try to have it the first Monday of August. We'd like an extra two weeks in order to make sure that we have all the kinks out of the budget by the time it goes to public hearing, so we're asking that the council set August fifteenth as the date of the budget hearing for the F Y two thousand and seventeen budget.
Okay, discussion amongst the council. We'll need a motion so everybody can vote on this.
I have a question for, if you may, when I might...
Walter?
So the, the, you're talking about the public budget meeting, eight fifteen?
Public hearing on the budget.
Where would, working backwards, where would the council workshop fall, and do we get...
July.
Do we get at least the usual amount of times between when it comes to us and when we sit to talk about it, and when it goes before the public? Talk about the whole timing, if you would, get...
Typically, and I'm sorry, I don't have the budget calendar with me today, but typically it's the second week of the, of July, and the council will have the budget three weeks ahead of time, as usual, so those dates are protected.
Gary, I think it's July eleventh and twelfth.
Yeah, so it's the second Monday and Tuesday, if we need it, of July. So that shouldn't affect the timeframe at all.
Okay, so my question just had to do with our ability to consider the budget.
Yep, and that's all protected.
That was my question as well, just when, when the workshop was...
As usual, it's in July.
So that's not getting moved, pushed back, anything?
No.
I would, I would make a motion, do we set the budget hearing for August fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen?
Okay, I got a motion by Dan, a second by John, to approve of the budget hearing for August the fifteenth. I'll start with you, John.
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll move forward, that is the day. Thank you very much, Gary. And we'll start off with reports. Art, we'll go with you first.
I'm just setting up my computer. Sure, we covered the items that were on Public Works and Finance tied during the regular meeting. Seems to spend a while since we've had reports. I've got a couple other with the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission that met on the third of March. The Paint the Palouse project is going forward, and they're looking for people to, who need to get their houses painted, preferably within a mile or mile and a half of campus to facilitate walking by the students to get there. There's also a first-time homebuyers class. The first one was in March. We've got another one April twenty-six and twenty-seven, May twenty-four and twenty-five. Both nights have to be attended, but it also is required to obtain Idaho housing assistance, so those are coming up for people who want to buy a home and need some assistance from the state. Various other items were discussed on how to obtain more affordable housing within the city, and some of that might be getting proposed here to the council eventually in the not-too-distant future. Sustainable Environment Commission met on the fifteenth of March, and interesting, it's kind of like closing the barn door after the horses are gone, but the university is sending out a survey to the community on the use of plastic grocery bags, and I think the thrust of that was altered to examine more of the purveyors and how to keep the purveyors from providing them more than legislating it. Earth Day Awards, we heard about, and there will be a joint publication of Wiscape book with the City of Pullman that should be coming out through the Water Department. So those are what we learned there. Let's see, we've got the U R A meeting coming up this Thursday, as previously discussed, so anyone who wants to learn about the Urban Rural Agency, that's at seven o'clock on Thursday morning.
Okay, Catherine?
Planning and zoning, we had great information about the standards and criteria, which Mike did, and then we had also a discussion, and really a re-education, about the difference between abstaining and recusing when you vote, and the minutes are, that are presented are, give a good coverage of the record of the proceedings and our reasonable statements of recording of the information, and so even if you didn't attend the meeting before a vote, you can and should vote. And so there was a lot of clarification on that, and that was really interesting discussion. And then there's the explanation of off-street parking standards, all the city comparisons like with everything else, which is very interesting. Changes recommended are said that help people apply when they want to do off-street parking, so there's a more streamlined process. Next up for P and Z is the stormwater treatment phase two standards. There was also talk about the street program, which is fifteen years old and it's being reviewed, and there are three shared readings for the next meeting about parking. Historic Preservation met, and the chair, Zach Winnick, communicated that the LeTo Historical Preservation Commission is kind of in their six-year strategic plans process, and they would like public input about the historic month, month of May for historic preservation events, so if you're interested to contact the LeTo County Historical Preservation Commission. Help, they want to help the public understand more information about what being on a national registry means, kind of like the ins and outs, and so they want to do some clinics and workshops. There was discussion about helping the public understand the Orchid Awards, what they do, what they mean, and Barb Corner was there, because she's working on their next newsletter, which is called The Preservation Moscow, and it comes out once a year, and then they talked about their budget request of sixty-five hundred dollars, which is the same amount they had the previous year. And that's all I have.
Okay, Catherine, very good. Walter?
Following Art a little bit, I'll step back before the previous council meeting, when we didn't have reports, to mention that I did attend P Back on the seventeenth of March, St. Patrick's Day. They, we had a presentation by the consultant that's helping P Back pull together all the information we've got on years, if not decades, of alternative water sources, and trying to, to get those laid out in a way that everybody can get their brain wrapped around them, try to decide which ones appear to be the most feasible for, from various criteria. And then tomorrow afternoon, we'll have a hour and a half-long conference call with P Back board members and the consultant continuing that conversation. On the twenty-second of March, I, along with some other council members, and I'm sure it was, the mayor was there, attended a town and gown event in this room with the ASUI senators, opportunity to visit with them and, and to reciprocate with their hospitality when they gave one of these events quite a few months ago. On the twenty-third, Wednesday of March, Farmer's Market Commission had a three-hour meeting, looking at the council-adopted policies for the farmer's market for this coming year, and then started a general discussion with no decisions being made about the rate structure, the fee structure for vendors at farmer's market. That continues. Then on Wednesday, the thirtieth, I met with the farmer's market, some of the members, and Catherine Burns, the Arts Director, looking at, trying to remember how many there were, eight to ten, maybe twelve, proposed posters for this year's farmer's market that would be put up around town. If you'll go to the website, there are two, the two finalists are on the website, and you may vote for the, the one that you would like to see used this year. I don't remember how long that's open, it started today, and it doesn't go real long, so if you have an interest in it, I'd suggest you go to the city website and, and jump on that. Make your, make your choice and pick your poster. On the thirtieth of the afternoon, myself and Art attended the presentation by the Idaho Water Resources Board of the North Idaho Adjudication for, for Water Rights. Not a whole lot of detailed information, just a little bit more in the way of what the timing might look like, the fact that they will be moving toward a, a beginning of it here in the next two or three months, and then that will help set the calendar for the rest of it, primarily trying to make the point of that every property owner in the, in the area that's considered, which is parts of LeTo and Benewall Counties, will be notified of the adjudication, and in that, if you are a city resident and incorporated city and own property, you will be told about it, but then it will tell you, you don't have to do anything because you're a municipal provider, and you're, in this case, the City of Moscow will handle it for you. But if you are outside the city, you have your own well or whatever, you'll get the information on what you might need to do to protect your interests. That evening, again, on the thirtieth, there was a public reception for the Police Department Chief candidates, there were four of them, it was fairly well-attended, quite a few of the council people attended, got a chance to meet and greet the, the candidates, and we are looking forward to who the mayor might have, be getting ready to put forth as a, as a candidate for police chief. Judging by the look on his face at this moment, you're not going to get any hints out of him right now, so...
Walter, you will learn about it as soon as everybody else does.
I understand that. This past Friday, I attended a branding meeting at Best Western, along with the other members of the branding, what do we call it, committee mayor?
CUSP.
CUSP.
CUSP, and had a presentation from the consultants that was pretty well-received by the, the people in attendance. The next step is for the committee to sit down and look at how to, how to roll it out, and, and what the costs are going to be, and who's going to be paying what, of the university, the city, and the Chamber of Commerce, that have all been assisting in the funding of the branding efforts. That's it.
Jim?
Administrative Committee, we pretty much covered out all that in the regular meeting. The Clear Water Resource Conservation and Development Board met last month, and we dealt with the issue of our executive director resigning, and we did so by promoting the office manager Barbie Miller into the executive director position, and she's done, made a number of changes in accounting and office management of that organization that makes it more efficient, and we felt she was quite competent to take over that seat, so we're happy about that, and she'll, she took that job over on April first. The Transportation Commission, the last time I attended that, last month, there was talk about the wayfinding signs on the Bicycle Greenway, and that's almost finalized, and I'm sure Les will have that sometime this summer. We'll be seeing the signs that tell people where to go on their bicycle to get around town more efficiently. That's all I have.
Okay, Dan?
Well, on the eighth, the Arts Commission met. They're looking for, going to be calling for some artists to put some more vinyl wraps on our utility boxes downtown, and so looking forward to that. On the tenth, Pluse Knowledge Quarter met, they're going to have their Be the Entrepreneur event here in the near future. I don't have the dates with me, but we'll, we'll be hearing more about that. Also, on the thirtieth, I did, I was there when we met with the chief candidates and got to see the sheriff candidate circling around like sharks in there, it seemed like, but that was, that was fun. And I also want to remind everybody that April sixteenth, at Keep the Beat Moscow, will be giving their free CPR training and two, there'll be two classes at the nineteen-twelve center. to Keep the Beat Moscow on Facebook to get signed up for that.
John?
The CODO for Affordable Housing, I got the word, we all got the word on the committee that the chances of finally selling our first house are good. As you go through the process, we found out there are many more Ts to cross and Is to dot with Idaho Housing than there ever were for banks or Realtors. And we are slowly but surely working our way through it, or actually, the director is working his way through it. But he seems to feel quite confident that we'll have a sale that we'll go through shortly. And then with the Tree Commission and with the Human Rights Commission, most of the stuff that both of these have are ongoing. And so I'm going to postpone anything on either one of those until they have the meetings this month. And I will report on both of those as they happen. And I've been to some of the meetings that have already been talked about. And you're right, I, sheriff's candidates were more like vultures. Good guys, but that's all I have.
Okay, John. As Walter had said earlier, the ASUI student leadership of the University of Idaho, and we all met up here, and this room really looked nice at night, thanks to Kirsten back there. And Jen Pifner had this set up, and we had leadership from the university, as well as counselors, myself, city supervisor, and other department heads here as well. Very nice evening. And it just goes to show you that collaboration, working with universities and students, is working for us and making things happen for us. So that's great. On the twenty-ninth of March, Eddie Angeles, who's head of the FAA, was here and toured our city and our airport. Myself, along with Gary, and Mayor from Pullman, Glenn Johnson, and Mark Workman, and Tony Bean, we toured around all of our areas, both universities, the campus sites. And it was a very good day, very productive for us. So we could see about this project. And he made, missed no words about this being the number-one project in nine western states. And he is very dedicated to it. So that was pretty nice to see that. Of course, on the thirtieth, the next day, we had an airport board meeting, discuss that as well as bids for the airport. The dirtwork and stuff's gonna come in. By the nineteenth, we will have, know who is gonna be doing it. Meeting, we'll have that. So that information will be coming per dug on soon. And dirt will get started moving this summer. On four-one, Walter talked about the CUSP meeting we had at Best Western and with our chamber, as well as us and the university and others. And we're headed forward with that. And as he said, there's a bunch of information. We're gonna be making some decisions real soon on which direction we go. And one of the nice events that we had on, and this is not an April Fool's thing, it was on April Fool's Day, and we had the U of I Bound Block Party on April one as well, which was very, very nice and well-attended. We had a lot of people from the university and kids and parents from out of town. Wonderful job that Assistant City Supervisor Jen Pifner, as well as Chamber Executive Gina Truccio, handled the details of it, and a bunch of great sponsors. And we're gonna do it again the twenty-second. I had so much fun on the first. So, and the whole idea behind this is to help the growth of the university and get people in here, parents and kids, and see what our town looks like and how we work and cooperate together. So that was very, very nice. Gary?
The only announcement I have is, and thank you for setting the public hearing on the budget tonight, the only announcement I have is that we are, have renewed the search for finance directors. I indicated at the city council. Our last search failed to yield a successful candidate. So we are back out, and hopefully we'll run that search about thirty days and be back. Both Walter and the mayor have indicated that we had, we're just finishing up a search for police chief. Candidates have been interviewed, and decisions will be made forthwith. On Wednesday morning, we have the quarterly regional breakfast meeting at Bannion's on the Ridge in Pullman, seven a.m. If you have not already RSVP'd, please let Judy in my office know tomorrow. And that's all I have, sir.
Very good. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, folks. Thank you.